For mighty the rule of heaven and earth, we seek to do as right of our councils and actions, so that we may notice what has justice, love and charity to one another. Help us like grace, if only those things that will promote beauty, happiness and the spirit of Nigeria, amen. Welcome back to this session very soon. My ladies and gentlemen, today I am on the chair of this committee. I look at them before they do sounds and talk to me. Of course, I don't dare from my Nigeria. Well, here is the chairman and my guest, my neighbor senator Brian Pali. I represent Nkonsa Tora District from Ithias Gate. And then you go to the chair. I'm sorry to have kept too waiting. I think we're supposed to come in here at 2:00 PM, but 2:00 PM we have no given from the chaperones. And we have some few opportunities which we have to attempt. So it's still going on now. And so as we proceed, many of our distinguished senators will be joining us. But I'm delighted to wait until the outcome because I'll be keeping a long time. That is reasonable. So I will ask the chair to call the first case.
The first case is between Aneka Padi and Ngero Corporation. Is that Aneka Padi? Ngero Corporation?
I, Engineer Malik Kanpadi, who solemnly affirm that if any I shall give for this district's community, shall be the truth, the only truth. And nothing but the truth, towards me go.
Hi, Friday Amanz. You solemnly affirm that evidence I shall give before this district's committee shall be the truth, the whole truth, and not only the truth, so help me God. Ah, Pascal Malou. You solemnly affirm that evidence I shall give before this district's committee shall be the truth, the whole truth, and not only the truth, so help me God.
Hi, Ushad Neshi. You solemnly affirm that the evidence I shall give before this district's committee shall be the truth, the whole truth, and not only the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, Sir Barmo. Me, Mr. Tuchan, you're a president. Ngeni Mokarucha. What's your position there? Who is standing on the floor? And that's you.
I am the standing on the floor.
You're the standing on the floor? Who is standing on the floor?
Oh, Friday Amanz, and the chair. Very professional, yes.
I am Engineer Malik Kanpadi. Engineer who? Engineer Malik Kanpadi.
This man, where?
No, the witness.
We have, is he a witness?
Yes.
Is this your own case?
Yes.
Why did he become a witness? I mean, this is your fifth appearance.
Yes.
I'm saying for the first time.
No, he was saying that he has his witness or his public case.
I understand that. My question is, when did he become a witness? He was a witness the first time, second time, third time, fourth time. This is sixth time. Suddenly, he's a witness? Why have you not presented him as a witness before all this work?
Talking, I'm waiting because cannot, he cannot come in here at the end of the whole proceedings.
The chairman, if we feel that it shouldn't be a witness.
I'm not, no, I'm just, what I'm saying is I'm surprised that this is the sixth appearance. Suddenly, you add a witness. And question, how come you have not witnessed this? And given to him?
No, Mr. Chairman, he had been here, he had been here several months. I've not called him.
Alright, alright. What is this gentleman? What is this gentleman?
Friday Amanz.
When did you work?
I was in the area of New Kuru.
How long did you work there?
Say, twenty-two?
Twenty-two. Twenty-two years, yes. When did you retire?
Oh, I've not retired, I'm also a petitioner, yes.
Also a petitioner?
Yes. It's the same case, actually.
You see the same thing with this case?
Yeah, but we brought our petitions separately.
So that's it?
Yes, but we brought our petitions separately.
No, it's all about the same subject.
Yes, sir.
Alright, tell me if you're okay. That's number five, that's number five.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll take that vote together.
The chairman of the committee. Let me take something, I will do something.
Thank you. Well, I'd rather not apologize than black us, yes. It's our intention to promote this case today. Is there anything? The last time we were here, I remember we did say that we should go back and then maybe come back with a helpful or useful matter, right? So do you have any suggestion?
Distributor, distributor's let us. Let me just throw a light. The invitation for this appearance was received in our judicial office towards closing two days ago. So yesterday we had to translate it to help matters and leave us. And for the respect and regards, the managing director and the management team asked for this committee to send it and lodge. They directed me to appear on behalf of this corporation. Luckily enough, during the last appearance on the 11th of July, 2024, I was opportune to be here with the director of the human resources, who is very passionate about the subject matter.
Why is that?
Because of the extension of the invitation. Yes, sir.
So, so. You just came down to, to just appear?
Yes, sir, the last time we came, the distributor's committee told us to go, hoping that the next appearance will be from our office. The issue of the committee.
So that's a reasonable reason?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. We are taking these things and these other documents together because they have to say, they have to say for everything is together that the course of action is the same. And so there's no reason why we want to suspect it. I just want to know, so even the head of the administration said you're like a director, you're like a director, you didn't say anything, but you come in today?
Distributor, she just directed me to represent the corporation. I don't think anything has changed, I'm not a distributor.
Do you recall what your position was the other time, what's your position? Or we are talking about all of this person?
Sir?
So we're talking about all of this person?
Yes, sir, but if I don't back believe it, the committee threw a question at the corporation, whether Engineer Padi and Ngero, who was the criminal. And the corporation said no, but he was neglected for two reasons. The incident happened on the 21st of 28th of this year. He being the head of a badminton, he construed the magnitude of the incident. He never reported it to the council officer of the district, until after eight days. That, on one side, he was blamed for the reason why he didn't report properly. He been told from the report he gave, his sexual officer, who was in charge of that section. I think it's him now, this one. I have no idea, never. I think he was. He reported the incident to him the same day it happened. So it took him eight days to report to the government of the nation. Secondly, when he was initially complaining, he didn't why he didn't report properly. It took him a matter of eight days to respond to that one against the statutory statute of ours. So those were some of the issues. I remember the chairman presenting the mandate to take a push to the two. In addition to the recommendations of the investigative panel set up.
And I remember asking if before this incident, there were other cases against him, whatever they said.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any reason to ask.
I remember he said there was something, he said there was something to find, it was the first time. I remember that one, that is the first time. Counsel, you got to say something? What do you have to say? Give us the evidence. The reason I keep referring to you so that you understand exactly what I'm saying. This matter was taken to a criminal prosecution before, right? Yes, right? Eh? No, it was taken to Nutsera District Court. Do you police report?
I remember it, yes.
Mr. Director.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
So I have reports, but I don't know what to hear. In that criminal proceeding, what happened?
Mr. Chairman, I can't.
The criminal proceeding, they caught the new court, right?
Yes, the police carried out investigation and then they charged the suspect to court.
That is suspect, that's?
Yeah, the suspect, that, penalized, and then sentenced him to one more year. Optional fine of fifty thousand. And then I think that the last time I was there, I think that you go to school.
And then? I just want, I don't want, I don't want to hear. Okay, that's right, pardon the language. So, counsel, the only thing we had is expectations. The only thing we had before this, he had failed to report on time, which he denied. Which he denied, said he made trouble to report to somebody on a call. But you guys said you didn't, he did it. And by the time he found him, he didn't report. It was out of time, right? To understand very well. So basically, you're talking about expectations. And this man worked for you for how long?
From record, sir, we judge the status of the corporation in two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand eighteen?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? Very good, okay. And I also asked whether or not there has been anything, any fraction against him up until that. And you said, no, this is the only thing on record that you have.
I said no, my knowledge, sir.
Well, this is his appearance. We have had this question before, I'm summarizing. Okay, please. I'm basically summarizing. Because what is weighing there in our mind is whether or not his career can just be terminated like that for what I consider an infraction, failure to timely report an incident. And for the record that we also have, we hope that those who were vandalizing the property, either all or one of them was apprehended and was taken to the necessary court and was found guilty. And with all of this, he was terminated. So, which is why I asked whether or not you have any directives from your boss, how they want to look at his state. But we don't believe he should be terminated. We don't believe he should be terminated. Unless you have something with other than infraction or, I mean, rather than negligence or failure to timely report, that is a completion, that is a completion of it. And for him to just be terminated, I don't, the Senate doesn't believe that that's a punishment for him. So we are going to direct that should be reinstated. That is the summary and that is the decision of the Senate on this matter. Thank you. Hey, gentlemen, this is number five. Not yet, because you should have established another one. Not today, yes. Yes, mention, mention.
This number five is between Kenneth and Aneka. This number five is between Friday, Friday Amanz versus Ngero Corporation.
So, again, like I said, it's the same, it's the same, somebody missing. Use was that was involved and it was personally involved in stealing property of your corporation, right? That's what is happening now. Right? No, not in that. Tell me, what's the allegation of this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The allegation as you mentioned, you said in the data of termination. So if you permit me to just, yeah, can you?
Just bring it, I'll be here.
They say the Serious Staff Committee on Appointment of Movement and Business has extensively reviewed the report from the management committee set up to investigate traffic vandalism at Kamuru Station, as you know, it has seven eighteen, seven eighteen, Zompoa Sector, North Central District. The findings of the report confirm your contributability and you are hereby found culpable gross misconduct by the offense of traffic vandalism. Therefore, you have contravened Denaru in nineteen sixty-four edition, chapter eleven, section fifteen, and section eighteen D and F. Similarly, you have contravened Public Service Rule, chapter three, section four, number zero three zero four zero two, one and two. At the end, if I, I don't know if I can just read all that, this will be very. That your appointment in the corporation as principal technical officer is hereby terminated with immediate effect for not safeguarding review revenue, appropriating review property for your personality and recklessly destroying review property as well as for acts of subpar and wicked derision of public property.
Counselor?
Yes, sir.
Did you get it?
Yes, I picked it.
Will you comment down later?
No, sir.
You know, I'm frustrated, Friday, I, Counselor. You just, everything here is a sound, no, no. Listen, if you don't present your case to us as fashion, who make decisions? Who make decisions now, making? This case must end today. And I'm looking to, I'm looking to adjourn this matter on that day. It's not end today. So if you are not interested to tell us, you take the decision on your own.
We told you, Mr. Chairman, when these issues came on, I'm not in the business. I'm busy in our management tier, in our department.
So they're not going here to come and waste our time?
No, sir, I'm just here to work that.
Okay, work very well. So talk to me.
Distributor, just like I told you earlier, if not for the shortness of time, there are proper people who are very common as a shopping model, who have been here and have always been here. So it is because, and just like I told you. When you see this document, it was closing two days ago in our Abuja Oasis.
That's a negative sign, tell me that is right?
Oh, a negative?
Not them, not them from their own office. That without the stash, not them from the stash two days ago. Or this letter dispatched you two days ago?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Clap, don't do it.
Yes, sir.
You respond to this in the last, last Friday, last Friday. The question, the question I'd like to ask you.
Yes, sir.
The question I'd like to ask you is.
Yes, sir.
This Mr. Friday Amanz, this Mr. Friday Amanz, is it that he himself participated in the actual official stealing of the property? Or is it matter of he didn't report or he didn't act to protect it? And separately, I want to know which is which. Because I'm writing, I'm sorry, I'm reading the report here. Police have investigated it. And some people were arrested and fined and all that. They are not seeing where this event came. Was found with stolen property. So was it, was it, did this steal? Or is it also a matter of negligence to either report or protect the property?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, hold on, please, I'm sorry, turn off the mic. Please allow my distributor brother to introduce himself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Deputy Chair of my colleagues, Sunday Marshall Kachon. I represent the Department of South Central District and I'm from the province state of Kaduna.
Your wife?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for this. Just like I told you, I've never met Mr. Friday. And I have never met his name anywhere. Because this matter was reported to the headquarters in Amstey. Reported set up the investigative panel. We in Abuja, by the structure of realism, do not know everything that is happening in Abuja. We only know what is happening in Abuja. There we are, the side of this, our jurisdiction. However, in the course of my going through the report, submitted the respect of Indian Akam, Nekon. I found out that.
Who, who, who?
In the report of it.
There's an allegation, I'm done with that. No, sir, I'm done, I'm done.
No, I'm talking about this Friday.
This Friday?
Yes, sir. That's the only way I have read about this Friday, this thing of the work. That's what I'm trying, we are trying. So I don't have the full information of what is involved in here. It's from the report of Indian Akam, read that. He was, he went to take the guy, the principal suspect on bail from the police. And that's the only thing I read about him. Where did he take the principal suspect on bail from your police? The suspect that was caught.
Yes.
So that's the only way I have read about him. That's the only thing I know about him. So I can't say that you not do this or not, to the Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you. So Friday, would you have?
Yes, I'll find it, Mr. Chairman.
Did you, the person, that was, I was alert, not, there was something else. Was it Tom Grosse?
Sir?
Alright, this person was alert to have stolen the property. Do you know it?
Mr. Chairman, I came to the police station myself. So and the police, even on the night, as I, as I've written in my petition here, you see, even that Monday, the police wanted to release him on bail. But I pleaded with them that I have to report this to our district headquarters of Kaduna, which I did. But following the police called me, they really have to release this man on bail, I should look at him. He's not feeling well because of his free hit as a matter of fact. So that day, they released him on bail. Now, the man that.
Did you post the bail?
No.
No, not at all. What I want to say against, Mr. Chairman, the, the, uh, panel they sent, that came for, for it from Lagos, that's in, uh, one of the numbers, the representative of the Commissioner of Police, to ascertain whether what's the man who alleged I bailed him, and as I billed the suspect, whether what he said is true or not. He was asked to go to Zompoa and find out. He did. He went there and he's alive, the man is alive. When there, the police told him, they granted the man bail on there. Oh, not that I, I, there was nowhere, uh, I wasn't the one that I bailed him on, he wasn't even, these are two separate cases. You look at it, try to just make it look as if it's one, which is not.
All right. Thank you. Please, yeah, allow my brother to introduce himself.
Chairman, and colleagues, I guess that, my name is Senator Mohamed Bush, oh no, I represent Masara South. Sorry for the name.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to ask this question for you, for how long have you been working with the Gere Division?
Before termination of my appointment, since around twenty years, I joined the General Review Corporation in two thousand, the year two thousand.
So now, how, for how many years, to be specific and direct, for how many years have you been working with?
Twenty, twenty-two.
Twenty-two years, yes. Do you find with any big proper font of writing in these twenty-two years?
Not that, I, I, I've not. The only thing I can remember was once, uh, been advised as a lawyer.
Advised what?
Yeah, that, uh, uh, there was a case, when I was in Bina, there was actually a case, we, just like this one, we arrested the suspect and handed them over, although in the recovery of, uh, the materials, we were having. Where I was just been advised, so I'll handle the matter better next time, thanks, sir.
Last question, do you have any relationship with the accused person, because he was already convicted and he was a person? Do you have any relationship whatsoever?
Besides that, he works, one of them does, the principal suspect, Jekopilia, as you can see in the petition, sir.
Besides what?
I said, besides that, he, we worked together, he was my colleague, because one of them worked on that, I was their principal officer. I don't have any relationship with him, sir.
Any possible? Would you talk to me?
Jekopilia as a principal suspect, as the one.
He worked on there?
Yes.
Was convicted one year, one year.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Three years, how many vandalization cases have you violated?
I can't remember, we have reported many, not only reported, most of them, but I said the banders, I handed them over, only for them to be releasing them, that's the management.
So none of those that you have reported have been convicted?
Sir, my own, I'm only a few of, sir.
Yes.
I work at the, I wouldn't know where they were from.
To your knowledge, when you arrest them, you take them to the police station?
Yes, sir.
And tell the management that this is.
Yes.
You follow?
Mine stopped, once I reported the management, that is where my case starts.
So, I'm sorry, uh, I will have to drag you back, because I just want to throw with you.
Yes, same here, sir.
If you normally track and report companies, who vandalize, uh, corporation properties, why were you this way?
Sir, that's what I'm here to do, because I don't know, for this one, they're talking about I, if you can.
Look from the report.
I was the one that took them to the police station.
How many, how many queries have you ever got, head of this charge?
I can't even remember.
Can't remember what are you querying about?
I was never query.
You're never query? There are two different things you are saying.
I was never query.
But you are never query.
Okay, I, I, I leave my question now to, I think, the legal officer. Although you don't have the, the letter of termination of appointment of the judge of Friday Awards, you have?
Yes, sir.
You don't have, are you conversant with the rules? Conversant, conversant with your own rules, Public Service Rules?
So.
Your position, are you conversant?
So he's, so he's never listened, sir?
How, and how is that?
Let's say sixty-two.
Huh?
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two. Are you, are you conversant with the, uh, rules, chapter three, section four of the rules, Public Service Rules?
It said by.
You don't have that. It says, this, can I read it for you? Do you hear that? Are you okay? Are you ready?
Chapter four.
Chapter three? Section four. Particularly, probably, I have a view. Yeah, it, oh, you want me to read it for you? So they can make the argument.
Read it, sir.
Okay, they said sabotage and wicked damage in public property and forms of gross misconduct, which, uh, I think, paragraph four defines it as serious misconduct. It's a part of very serious wrongdoing and improper behavior which is inimical in the image of the services, that is operation, and which can be investigated and improved, may lead to, may lead to, may lead to this result. I don't know whether proper investigation was carried out in this regard, and if there is proper investigation, we need to have, we want to see. In that report. And, huh?
You want answer, please?
Thank you, I distributed it, I have. And it respected the committee of the law, and then from the testimony, so, that period, before the committee, and the committee delivered it, they, they proposed, which was transmitted to the government. And thereafter, the senior staff committee appointed member of the group of this, comprised of all the directors of the corporation. Do you imagine that, someone? So there was, I mean, this is good.
Yeah, that is why I say we want to see the report, because we want to see how it's going to sabotage. Well, like, it's part of, those that start from eight to nine, from this report, it is very clear, even though from what we have seen, we are not seeing any sabotage specifically, or imatisfected in the damage of the properties and the reconstitution. But that is why we need to see the report, so that we can go to justice. So, did you not answer this report?
Yes, and that's what I'm attempting to say, the report is, is the first submission of the corporation, first submission of the corporation, pretend, the one, the one.
But the question is asking for your name, is asking in that report, because I, I'm, I'm trying to connect him to this act, counsel, if you understand me, very, I'm trying to find a nexus, between the act committed and this man, other than that is a supervisor of the local capacity, and couldn't stop them from stealing it, or giving it a party of time, or giving reports at all. So these are the only things I am, I'm saying. So is there anything other than this?
Not in my knowledge.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, if you look at your own letter of termination, I can shoot you here. You say, General Rules nineteen sixty-four edition, railway staff, yes, according to sections and all that, relevant section, you said railway staff must within the capacity of their ability, safeguard the way revenue, and report to their immediate superior, any instance of laws or, or possible fraud. Did he make a report? I'm asking.
Yeah, yes, I'm from record.
He made a report?
Yes, I'm from.
Thank you. Two, no railway staff must appropriate to its own use any property belonging to or in custody of the railway administration. Did he appropriate any railway property for its own use?
Sir, I cannot answer, because.
No, you have to answer.
I said, sir.
No, it's, it's your letter, I'm cutting from your letter. Did he appropriate any railway property for its own use?
Sir, if I listen to you from the beginning, I said the only place I read about Mister Friday is in the support of.
No, this is the letter of termination issued to him, and I'm cutting.
Sir, I've not even seen the letter, I've not seen the letter.
You've not even seen the letter?
I'm telling you, sir.
So why are you there?
Sir, I, this is the time I'm here, you can not, I do say it, this letter of invitation was received in our office.
It doesn't, it, it doesn't matter, if you, if you present yourself here, you must be in a position to answer all questions put to you. You cannot excuse, if you didn't get proper briefing, you would have told your superior that, look, I'm not properly briefed, so I won't be able to answer any questions. So I ask again, did he appropriate any property, to the best of your knowledge and your brief, for its own use?
Sir, I, I cannot say yes, I don't have the answer to that question.
The, you also say, waste of wantonly destroyed stationary, stores, or any property of the railway administration. The team wantonly to destroy stationary, stores, or any property of Nigerian railway corporation?
This is a missing letter, I cannot mislead the house. I've said it, I tell you, I am not conversant with this on the matter, and I've said the circumstance and brought me to this place.
So the answer is no?
I don't have the answer.
All right.
All right, um, sorry, Chairman. I, if you go through the, the police report, and subsequently the conviction of, uh, uh, Mister, Mister Ilya, Jokopilia, you'll find out that there is no nexus whatsoever with this judgment. They never said, Jokopilia did not measure his name in any of it, in, anywhere, even if not go at the police station. Even in the investigation, none, his name did not appear anywhere. And my just doing this thing is that, there is likelihood that we still give you one opportunity, they want you to take all this thing over, so that by the time you come back, you'll be able to, whoever is coming, will be able to give us satisfactory answer of all these questions you are asking. Since you are not conversant, you may not be able to tell me whether, yes, there is a nexus between Jokopilia and Friday, in the commission of this offense.
Thank you. Um, Mister Friday, how many times have you come to us?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
How many times have you come before us, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, only as, uh, I, have you come as.
Your, how many times did your case come up here? This is the first time, sir.
Very good.
All right. All right, um, we just need to shut up this committee to avail one shot here. While John, but last time, there's no be a shot, but, there'll be a shot adjournment. But let me also say, that we have all the facts that we need to know. But because both of you have demonstrated that you don't really have been, you're not conversant with this case, ask Bono if you were, say, okay, I will give you one more adjournment. Please, on the date that you receive to appear, make sure that somebody who knows something about this matter will be here. Two, we have sufficiently discussed this matter, and so the question of, uh, I'm not prepared or something should not be, we wouldn't entertain that. Third, when we meet again, we'll make a decision whether you come or you don't come. So we will not entertain another delay. Therefore, we advise that you come again, but if you do not come, we take as some days of the facts of the record that you have given us. Is that clear?
Yes, sir.
All right, so therefore, uh, this matter is adjourned, very short adjournment for us to conclude on the case of Mister Friday Awards, that is, some of this committee.
I, it's a simple summary, I've shared that you may as well give for the distinguished public to share with you. We'll keep our doors open, with your help. I basically regret to do so in their affair, that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the bull truth, and not the bull truth, so that we can.
Our message to the, to the, to some of the staff. I found that the evidence that I keep before this position of chief, shall be the truth.
Listen to this, sir.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, my name is, my name is Engineer Patrick Singh, who was a F P S E. I'm representing the Monos in the Senate, several of our visitors, thank you.
Um. Again, I apologize for the late starting of this, of this, um, proceedings. This is the fourth hearing. This is the fourth hearing of this matter. And I think we have exhaustively thought through it subsequently. And we're here again. I remember the last time we had this case, we were questioned for the list of the two thousand nine to two thousand eight staff. And the number. And how many of them disland actions were taken against? And two, did you not join the service? That's all the question. We have to go that way. Can I respond?
Um. Distinguished Chairman. Uh, thank you very much. I, I equally remember that on, on that day. Uh. It was also affirmed that. The custom should be notified of who the petitioners are. Because when I read through the songs that I received, the songs we received, it was, it was clear, uh, a word came up. Those upgraded between two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten. The, the, the letter clearly says, states that. That aside. We did not receive any brief telling us what exactly the prayers are. Two thousand and nine sets and two thousand and ten. Look, there was even a recruitment in two thousand and ten. There was a recruitment in two thousand and nine, there was a recruitment in two thousand and eleven, and there was a recruitment in two thousand and twelve. And from what I read from the songs, the two thousand and nine, two thousand and eleven, and two thousand and twelve graduates. Were those that were, uh, giving that advancement. So no perceived injustice was done to them. So I'm now at a loss, or rather the services are at a loss, who the petitioners are and who, who those expressing their grievances are. Distinguished Chairman, sir, is still not clear to us. Thank you, sir.
This, this appeared to me to be what they call class action. I mean, class action, we now have the habits of all of them, but of course, somebody has to be in there. I appreciate you doing that. Okay. Mr. S M S N. Do you have a response to what you said?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my, I am actually the petitioner on behalf of those, uh, those upgraded in two thousand and nine, two thousand and eleven, and two thousand and twelve. They know them, they have stagnated them. The basic point, Mr. Chairman, is this. Those people are actually undergoing a situation of speaking, as the result of that situation. And they appear as before you, this committee, before they go to the situation. The fear, the fear, that have been fixed by this law by the Nigerian customs service. That if they appear, that they are further fixed by them. Because they are actually undergoing victimization and discrimination, I have to speak. That's just the basic thing, that's why they came and said, look, please, help us present our case before the committee. And the committee seem to be the premier of justice. Present it. All what Nigerian customs service is trying to do is, they know them, but they want to drag them out for further victimization. That is the reason why I have decided to stand in for them, Mr. Chairman, and there's nothing wrong about my being a petitioner in this case. If they look into their books, they know exactly the group of people that we are talking about. We have said to them, look, give us evidence of what, how you promoted the people that you promoted or you, you have, uh, upgraded there. Then give us evidence that led to the stagnation of these other people. We need to know what you have done, what, have you set an example for them? Or you don't decide that, look, we are going to stagnate you people and also upgrade these other people. Because what really happened in the Nigerian customs service is, Mr. Chairman, they decided to stagnate by the petitioners in order to give room. In order to give room to the people they have upgraded. To the people they have said, uh, will properly be in place, they will open in this, on the same level. They will, in fact, the petitioners enjoyed, uh, enjoyed seniority over the people that they promoted over them. For over twelve years, they enjoyed seniority, those people gave them some stations and compliments. They trained those people just for the Nigerian customs service to one day start, uh, take a decision and say, look, we are going to stagnate you. So that we can promote these other people that we just recruited. So those people, the petitioners, lost their seniority to, to their juniors. And this is exactly what's happening in the Nigerian customs service, Mr. Chairman. That has brought about the distortion of hierarchy.
Yes. Thank you very much for us today for the opportunity. I, I have this to say. As I speak, I'm the Deputy Controller General in charge of human source. Im- immediately after the advancement the petitioner is talking about, I was secretary.
Which is the twenty, oh nine, twenty thirty?
Yeah, I, I was, I was, I was secretary to the Nigerian Customs Service Board. So I'm in a very good position to address all the issues he has raised. But I still maintain. That those that were favored are the graduates, those that he claims were favored, are the graduates of twenty two thousand and nine. They were recruited in two thousand and nine, recruited in two thousand and eleven, and two thousand and twelve. And I remember vividly during our last, in our, in our last hearing. I stated this claim, if you count the number of years from two thousand and nine to twenty twenty-four, you have fifteen years. And a personnel that was recruited as a graduate in two thousand and nine would have gotten five promotions. And the sect of two thousand and nine are now assistant controllers, she is one of them. Then those that were recruited in two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve, they achieved super status. That is why I keep saying that I don't know who these people are, because two thousand and nine, two thousand and eleven, and two thousand and twelve recruitment, cadet recruitment. Were those that were given that advancement. And I remember on that day, I gave you a very clear reasons for doing that. Okay, those officers were stagnated for some time. And from A S C two to A S C one.
Which officer was stagnated? The one in question?
No, the, yes, the, the, the ones in question. So from two thousand and nine to two thousand, they then said, okay, fine, since they have spent their normal, uh, three years, okay? Let's close the gap. And this, uh, action was ratified by the Nigerian Customs Service Board, which is the highest policymaking body for the Nigerian customs service.
This is the time they are talking about, how many years, did they also have fifteen years?
Okay, two thousand and nine has spent fifteen years in service, and they have got five promotions.
Okay, the ones they're referring to, how many years have they got?
I, the, the, the ones he's referring to, if it's the two thousand and nine, two thousand and eleven, or two thousand and twelve, as he stated, because from the heading of the petition.
So those also have fifteen years?
No, the, 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 the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve have, have spent less than thirteen years, and most of them are chief superintendent, and he is one of them.
But the class, the class, the class of customer desires in question. Okay, two thousand and what?
Two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, they were upgraded.
Okay, so now two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten. Yes, two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten.
Upgraded to assistant superintendent of custom.
Yes.
To give, in two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten, they were already custom officers upgraded to that position.
How many years did they have when they were recruited? Do they have up to fifteen years, as I want to know?
Mr. Chairman.
Do they have up to fifteen years in service?
Yes, they do. They do have.
Okay, so what is their present rank now?
They are still left in, some of them are still left in the assistant superintendent of custom, some of them are chief superintendent of custom, which is not supposed to be so.
So they are supposed to be what?
They are supposed to be, at least assistant, uh, either assistant from job of custom or that kind of rank. Then the basic point, Mr. Chairman, no, no matter what they are.
So they know. So if they have fifteen years, because I had to say that they have fifteen years, like, like, officer here. What's your rank now? So then they ought to at least assume the position of assistant controller. Right, if they have fifteen years.
Can, can I?
No, no, I want to, I want to understand this, because I know customs, and I don't know high court. So, but I'm taking your word that if you have spent fifteen years.
As a.
By any other reason, that you ought to have been an assistant.
Controller.
Controller, yes. This class of individuals they're referring to, the reason why we're having this conversation, have already spent fifteen years. So the question in my mind is, why have they not been promoted to assistant?
Okay, uh, uh, can, can I, can, can I, I could, I could give you the possibility.
Okay.
The possibility, uh, we, we recruit at different levels. We recruit at level three, we recruit at level four, we recruit at, uh, level six, then we recruit at level eight. Level three, went to secondary school, possibly no English and mathematics. Level four, went to secondary school, possibly with English and mathematics. Level six, uh, O N G, maybe N C E, that bracket. Level eight, university graduates and agenting owners. Now, if you are recruited at level eight, and you in two thousand and nine, and you spent fifteen years, chances are that you'll be an assistant controller. But if you were recruited on level four, how can you be an assistant controller?
Oh, thank you.
How?
Alright, thank you. I'm just going to clear your mind now.
Okay, I'll come to you this evening, but let me start from here. Please, the class of, uh, two, twenty oh nine and ten you are talking about, of what qualification? What qualifications?
Mr. Chairman, a lot of them are masters of the dual, that's a lot of them.
This is what it will do for us. We are not going to share this with them. They are going to give up on either names, on how they were employed, on their present positions. Want to see it. That's all we can do. Just nothing with this.
Okay, however, Chairman, before I continue, if he should. Bring such documents, that is top, simply confidential.
Yes, that is not for them.
Yes.
Otherwise.
It's not for their worries.
Otherwise, he made a demand from this committee to give evidence for the people promoted. The criteria behind the promotion. See, by interview they passed, or by examination they passed, or whatever, I heard him saying that today. Excuse me, I'm not allowed, I'm not finished, you have to come back please, and whenever you are talking, do your voice now, thank you. Now, Mr. Controller, uh, this is, you see, I heard you are not, uh, my, my dear, I heard you are not a custom officer. I heard you are not affected by this issue of promotions. Go. So, as far as I'm concerned, there's a kind of human rights services I wish Nigerians to perform. Not the one of doing in order for stopping them to be dropping money from their to assets. That is the case. If he had made a demand, you need to, I'm sorry?
What did you like?
Okay, good, you need to furnish this, of this committee with a list of, uh, that class of twenty nine, ten employee. One, you need to furnish this, uh, committee with the criteria for their promotions from that twenty oh nine. Get it right, you need to furnish this committee with these documents.
So we'll.
If we are talking of freedom of information, we are not, this is not, it doesn't fall under that class, find the document. Stop me that, then if the day you adjourn this case too, he must appear here that day, and that day they should be asked why they will not appear. And coming, they must come with such documents, complete.
Thank you.
Alright.
Yes, please.
No, you won't.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I want to make reference to the exit F and G, these documents. Do you have it? Your kind permission, Chairman, I see for him to be shown.
Yes, yes.
Go ahead, please. Are you conversant with those two documents?
Yeah, I, I, I'm conversant with the first one.
Yeah, the names have deliberately been, uh, removed. Are you conversant with the two documents now?
Uh, for the. Uh, the one level three, I've seen it for the first time. There's a, there's one level three.
Can you see F and G?
And G. Yes, I've seen F and G, so.
What does it say?
It's a, it's a letter of appointment.
Okay, what does it say?
When, when was that letter?
When was that letter dated?
That letter was dated in two thousand and nine.
And what is the rank of the person that was, uh, appointed, so appointed?
Okay, uh, he was appointed on level eight.
Level eight, which means he's what?
He, he must have been, most likely, no, he must have been degradated or.
Etiquette.
I think he would also write.
So you see the argument he's making now? Can you see the argument that Noah is making, the petitioner is making? Guys, so those two letters belong to the people the petitioner is representing. So if they were omitted in this upgrade exercise or whatever, which means there's some merit to what is alleged. So if they were omitted in this upgrade exercise or whatever, which means there's some merit to what is alleged. I just wanted you to, the rest of this before you appear next. So that you'll be fully prepared to defend whatever it is you're asking to, yeah.
Can I?
Go ahead.
Your, your book, uh, committee, I, let, let me quickly add this. This, those officers were recruited in two thousand and nine. The advancement took place in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Okay? Let me just get the record straightened out. Those officers that were recruited in twenty twenty-nine.
Sorry, sir.
Two thousand and nine, sorry.
Remember you are under off.
Yes, sir. Those officers that were recruited in two thousand and nine didn't get that advancement until twenty twenty-one. At that point, they had gotten their regular promotion from level eight to nine and to ten before the advancement. Para venture, if that officer missed one of the regular promotion, his advancement would not be.
On time.
Exact, exactly.
So what, what would the reason advance for that person not to be?
To have missed.
To have missed it, yes.
Okay, beautiful. Uh, setting criteria are applied. Setting criteria come to place. All our exams, all our promotions, except that advancement that was across the board, okay? We are done by exams. Okay, I, 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 if at some point, the number of vacancies are known, you just take a look at the scores and you rule a line. If the vacancies are enough, once you get to sixty percent, you will go to the next round. But if you don't get up to sixty percent, you just rule a line and the others may not go. So some of those that were recruited in two thousand and nine could get promoted to the next higher round, while some are left behind. So when that advancement happened, those that were already, uh, in rank ahead of their mates, now got elevated to a higher round. Why they got elevated to a higher round, or the next two, or that higher round for the next lower round?
You are not even comprehensive yourself.
Eh, is it? Yes, I, I, I don't know, I don't know if, if I'm clear. If, if you missed your regular promotion at some point before that advancement, you cannot be at par with your colleagues because it happens in service. It doesn't mean that if you are recruited the same day, worked at the same rank at some point. Some get promoted, some get dropped.
You meant loss of seniority.
Yes, sir.
Due to lack of vacancy.
It could be lack of vacancy, it could be due to, uh, low exam scores.
Is that not purity?
No, it's, it's not purity because there is a minimum in the civil service is sixty percent.
So, if an officer is not promoted, do you communicate to him the reasons for his not being promoted?
Oh, he, he, uh, mo- most times, sir, he's, he's.
No, 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 we don't want most.
No, no, he's, he's.
Don't you have a standard?
Yes, sir, there, there is a standard.
Officer is not promoted, it is his right to know why he was not promoted.
Right, yeah, yes, sir. Writing the example, uh, once you do finish your exam, the system gives you your score. If you don't make sixty percent, you know that you're not good.
Sorry, if I may ask this question, uh, if I may ask this question, please. This promotion, this automatic promotion is based to the class of, uh, twenty two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten. Was it automatic for all of them? Was it automatic for all of them?
Yes, so for, 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 for those that were, were graduates, those that were cadets.
It was automatic?
Yes, it was automatic, but you can't, it's unfair with your mates. If you have not lost any promotion before that.
Just, just answer this question.
Yes, it was automatic, it was automatic.
Yes. I would be glad to see that, uh.
Yeah, yeah, but, but, uh, as, as the chairman rightly says, sir, as the chairman rightly said, it's automatic. But, like, uh, like the Nigerian customs says, like all other federal government agencies, if you have disciplinary disciplinary case, you will not enjoy it.
But you, because we communicated that this is the reason.
Yeah, yeah, they, yes, they, they, uh, they will know.
All animals are equal.
Yeah, they, they, they will know that they have reason, they will, they will know that that's the reason for their not to get promoted.
Yes, yes, sorry, let me, I just want to understand this very well. This, this promotion, the promotion for this class, it was everyone, everyone that was employed, who was recruited in, in two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten was automatically promoted based on the decision of the one customs want.
Yes, yes, sir.
Nobody was, uh, denied automatic promotion, nobody was.
But if you have a disciplinary case, you, you would.
Oh.
If you have a disciplinary case, you will get elevated.
I mean, when you say, I agree, what I'm trying to say is that you, you made mention of the procedure of promotion. They said you have to write exams, if you have disciplinary case, this, this and that. You may have problem to be at, uh, at par with your, with your, with your mates.
Yes, sir.
And most importantly is that there was a decision that every person in the class of two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten were promoted. Irrespective of whatever.
No, no, but, but that will not override the, the general regulations.
Okay.
Do not override it.
All right, you know, like, uh, Counselor, I understand, I understand what you're going for the shot very well. We want, we want officer, what we requested before, we still demand. All right, we said list of two thousand and nine and ten staff and the number of, the, the, you know, the list of them, apparently are there. And if there were any disciplinary action taken against them, we want to make summary words that was about. And the decision made again, but in that, for that purpose. Two, we also want to give you the time they joined the service. If we have those things, they will be good to acknowledge the decision.
Yeah.
Um, Counselor, please, give me that list, the number of exclusive. Because I want to study much of it, uh, bring that list to us, all right? Okay, any, anyone thing to add?
So, right.
Mister Chairman, I think one of the, the requirements you should demand on the Nigerian customs service will be the exam that they took, did they set a test for them? Because the public service will clearly state that at any point in time, so that all officers who fall within the field of selection for any promotion exercise shall be considered, shall be considered, except those who are under disciplinary action. Now, there must be an exam for people to be promoted, request of them to bring that exam. That should be one of the things. What, what, what test did they give to those people? Because they were all in the same rank, they were all in nearly the same rank and they decided to upgrade staff and less staff.
Um, let, let me, I'm still want to say, if the program will be asked, yeah, we will find it there. We will find it because that's what we say, they say disciplinary action taken against anyone, they want to know why. If there's certain action taken against them, and we know when they were involved, right? And you give me that list, that you tell me, maybe you can actually provide those ones for me, if you wrote exams, like this, those more stuffs.
Mister Chairman, if you write any exams.
Eh?
They didn't write any exams, they just upgraded them.
So, so you know about the stamp there, so provide, officer, please, I, I, I know it's, I know it's.
Yes.
We program will act from, these are twenty thousand and nine and two ten staff. What you were employed, whatever was said, disciplinary action taken against them. Right? And then tell that present rank, present rank that you have.
Mister Chairman, this is exact thing that you have told them to.
Those are things.
It's okay, no, it's okay.
For five.
So, this, like I said, this is the, yeah. This is, uh, this is a matter that I think we can trust after this fourth hearing. Again, no big shift here, and we don't really want to drag this matter beyond the next hearing. What we do in the next hearing, uh, actually promote indulgence, so that at least we can understand each other. We don't want to take decisions when you're not here. But the next hearing, we take decisions of what you have brought or, or what we already have. All right, so please, and they want to provide what we asked for, we asked for it before. I know you said that we are close as to who these people are, but it's in class action. Look those who employed in twenty thousand and nine and two thousand and ten, you know those records, you have the record. Most of them, I mean, can't tell us not about the record, otherwise how we promoting them? Like they don't pay road, they don't pay road. So you know, and if you provide those things, then we will be able to help ourselves. And we are doing, we are doing this for you, you know why? We are talking about colleagues, so call me if you have to. There's a saying, my lovely, lovely man, says, uh, that man is a fool. Who says where they are meeting is meet, say, oh, this is meet, it's nobody they are meeting, it's my meet. Come to me one day, eh? So we are also doing it for, not just for this officer, but every other officer in customs and any other, any, any other services that, that serves Nigeria. And we appreciate what you are doing, we know that customer officers are doing so well. We note that, we recognize that, and even in this community, in this, in the center, customer officers, we know you're working very well and always giving you a trip, uh, knowing if you know whether to, uh, help you in this. So please cooperate, you know, so that in this hearing, you have all these documents, so we can complete the session.
Can I, can, can I quickly, uh?
Want to run them now?
No, I, I, I.
You want to move them now?
No, 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 I, I don't have the power to do that. You, uh, let, let me quickly say this. Uh, there was no recruitment, he is talking about two thousand and ten. There was no recruitment of ca- of cadets in two thousand and ten. Not to my knowledge. No, there was no upgrading in two thousand and ten.
Okay, but there was, there was.
There, there was an unemployment in two thousand, a recruitment of cadets in two thousand and nine. Their, their advancement, as I, as I earlier said, was only twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so what you are telling me now, who didn't write it? Tell me that there was no recruitment in two thousand and ten, but there was in two thousand and nine.
Yeah, for, for cadets, there was not.
So give us that report.
There was not.
Eh? Yes, sorry. Hold on, my, my colleague has put it for you. Uh, with your kind permission, Mister Chairman, I want to show you this. Can you read the title of that, uh, document, please? Read the title. Read it out, please.
Okay, oh, release of twenty ten senior officers promotion and upgrading conversion and lateral transfer.
What is the, what's the end of the document?
Oh, this is two thousand and ten, this is a different event, can I, that's not the problem. It's not, it's not.
No, you said there was no recruitment, no promotion.
No, no, there, we, we, promotion is an annual event.
Is that, okay, that's what. So when you read the document? So, are you, are you through now? Are you through now?
Yeah, I, I, no, initially I just realized that we don't have a group making this work for the other man.
All right, so that's the right test. You done with it? You done with your mind? All right, thank you so very much, um, who are joined for the last time. And please, we ask before that you provide us these documents that we asked for. Uh, please, appeal those documents, unless there's something else for us to see. So if there's nothing, if, if, we all are very transparent, please, let us stop looking. And for the petitioners, please, like I asked, give me the list and I want to know when you were employed in that present ranks. Uh, in the absence of any other thing, who are joined and, uh, thank you all for coming. All right, work on again, um. Why, how are they? Now, I, I, in the last sitting, we're tittering towards adequate results. And we're also leaving so much on what the political relative or mercy, um, what can you do? I think that is why we said we, you know, see again and make the decision, but we also want to input in the decision we are about to make, we will communicate the right name, but do you have any? Have resource for this matter?
Putting in this, the chairman, all the other members, um, distinguished members, sorry. Well, at the last sitting, uh, yes, we requested for that, which we went back to report. It's not in our prerogative to give that, because you have been hired as one in the International Achievement Conference Committee, which is supposed to, we have reported. So when we saw this someone, and you said you didn't write to the office. So when we saw this, we were like, okay, let's appear and see what's going on. But we have reported to the office, we will do. So, but we don't have the power to do anything.
And you have not, you have not responded back to me? We are going to.
Of course.
We are going to adjoint senior that now come back again, in second hour, decision right. Madame, do you understand this?
Very clear.
You understand, I said, so, so we are going to adjoint who don't have come again, they don't have. They don't have come again. Who will communicate a right, what are the social positions?
Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you. These matters are just in that.
She can't see. Is mistaken at our. Is mistaken at our.
Are they here?
Yes, uh, I don't propose to pass a procedure. The petitioners.
Well, well. Can I? Can I move this one here? Sorry? And this is the first of seven.
And this is the dot. This is, this is.
The dot?
No, the dot here is. Okay, four, two, three, ah. I was even wondering, because he chatted him in the last. And I told him that he can really go to the, he's certain about his student. And I wonder why he said.
What case is this?
This case.
What case is it?
This case.
Eh? I should.
Chairman Sir, at the last hearing, the committee directed as the dispatch writer of that section from yesterday Friday. And then with the outgoing incoming, incoming register.
Okay, do you have the ten?
Yes, sir.
Hi, Mr. Adam Friday. Who said, who firmly affirm that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth and not the body truth, so help me God.
I, Julie, okay. Who suddenly affirm that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth and not the body truth, so help me God.
Hi, Mademoiselle Peter. Who suddenly affirm that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth and not the body truth, so help me God.
I have give, who must have that evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth and not the body truth, so help me God.
Um, very quickly. Dispatch.
Sir.
I have one question, one, one question for you. Do you have a place, do you have a office, a place, call a office where you put your, your books, your, your clothes, your luggage, anything? Do you have it there, right?
Yes, sir.
Does anybody else share that place?
Yes, sir, that was 2018, yes, sir.
Ah, so 2018. Um. Does, uh. At that time you talked about, did Mr. Kennedy better? Obru. Did, did you share the same? Did you share the same place?
Yes, I will share the same office.
Okay. So, take, take us through it, we are listening very passionately. You were not here the other times, you won't be here today now. So, my office is bringing mail to Nigerian Promotion and Espo Promotion Council. So, it comes to your office, take me from there, what, how does it get to the empty offices?
Thank you, sir. I'm the dispatch writer of the Red Espo Promotion Council, what's up? This is my term. And I am Mr. Ashem Kennedy. We will be sharing the same office. But whenever there is an incoming mail, I as a dispatch writer, I don't receive mail. We either personal or official mail, our group refer them to the Iggy's office. You are the receiving club, that is in the, the official documentation. And we pass it down officially to the dismissed officer that, that is meant to handle that document.
So you don't receive incoming mail?
I know, I know.
You're only dispatcher, you only go and dispatch?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does, have you ever received, received incoming mail?
Sir, I don't receive incoming mail.
Have you ever received incoming?
I don't, sir.
No, okay. Uh, Mr. Obru. Mr. Obru, Kennedy Obru.
Kennedy.
Has he? To your knowledge? Has he ever received mail coming to, to the Espo Promotion Council?
Sir, Mr. Mwolu Kennedy, he's a technician, maybe he can see important, so I need a teacher. So, because of the office space, we share the office, so he's at the other age, I'm at the other age. Whenever I'm going, at times, my, my directors will give me an instruction to go and dispatch and official details. If this are all non-governmental organizations. I will, I will tell you that I'm going on, in, in case they are asking of me. Then I will have official assignment, that is official dispatch, is what I normally do.
So, when mails come to, to the council, does it come to that office?
No, of.
Does it come there at all, it goes straight up?
Yeah, this, yes, sir. I tell the civil defense officers and the policemen and the gate. I tell they be misdirected, uh, dispatch writers or T H here. Come and dispatch, when they come to my office, I refer them to the receiving club. I think, up for them.
So when, when they, when they come with the mail, they are directly, they are appropriate.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And then that's when it logins and all that, right?
Yes, sir.
So, no mail is received in your. Have you ever seen Mr. Obru receive a mail? Received a mail?
That was, what, because the receiving club have this an official stamp. We indicate it that also later.
Is that stamp in your office?
No, that stamp is not in our office.
So, so, so as I, as I hear, so Kennedy, have you seen Mr. Obru receive a mail?
I don't.
Alright, thank you, turn off the. Turn off your mind. So, so what I have here? What I have here is the dispatch. This, this, this dispatch paper. Incoming. This is incoming?
Yes.
This is incoming?
Incoming.
So I'm trying to direct which one is. I'm looking for something here that indicates that. That. That this mail, this particular mail came through this office. Then here it came that it came to this office. And can you tell?
Which particular mail, sir?
Yes.
Which one, particular, which of the mail?
The mail that was written to the, to, to the empty Espo Promotion Council. The letter that was written, uh. To start by, Ted, 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 now, Ma, Ma, Ma Mu, Alai, Fishes, Afanite, and Kennedy, Obru. Letter, letter appeared on our respective promotion. I'm trying to find someone to address to reserve director, true director, I mean.
Which year, sir?
Just, you're going to look like a special from the dead, okay? But there's a meeting on it of, of 2016. 2016, not 2010. Turn off the screen, second letter.
The record will be 2018, sir. Okay.
Hey, there's a letter of 27th April. Why this is 2016, I'm 2010, I don't know. It's probably 2010. Of 2010. Show one, show this one. Like showing the next page that was stamped. It's a lot of showing. It's a lot of that was stamped. And it's, uh, six, and it's six A. Yeah, B one, B one A. B one A. Or still on that, still there. B one eight. Letter appeal for the ease of having a valid. Also.
This is not stamped, sir.
Eh?
There's no official stamp.
So there's, there's the one after that, there's one letter after that, right? This one, this one. B one A. B one A. Play, come. I think you want to play things. You love this, this letter, I know that. Russian. This one, the ninth is the last one.
I can see Mr. Official stamp on this here, she is probably 2010. That guy, so I don't have a problem.
That's what it's alright?
Yeah, it's 2010.
Alright, but you recommend that stamp? You recommend that stamp?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the date, the date of that letter is what?
Which of the time, sixty nine, twenty ten?
Eh?
Right, but it of the sixth March, twenty ten.
Okay, and the stamp, the stamp, the stamp was what?
Eighteenth March. Eighteenth March, twenty ten.
Same, same date?
Eight March. Okay, zero, that is eighth March, twenty ten.
And the date of the letter is what?
Have you checked this?
It's in the. Eh, it is, out, out of control, okay. And this is it, and the letter, in a, it's, it was stamped, it's in seventeen.
The date of the letter, it was system March, twenty ten. And it was received on the eighth of March, twenty ten.
Who, who showed in this? Who showed in this? Identify that in the law. I can flag this one. Okay. Also, both, both are identified, what are, eh?
Like distinguished chairman, the twenty ten, this is my case, sir.
You have it there? You have twenty ten register somewhere?
Sir?
You have the twenty ten register somewhere? Uh, we don't want to rob it, we join it here. You were here in the last year, right? Who was here?
Only me.
Okay.
So I was not the one that represented me.
I know, but, but you understand. I know, but, but you understood everything that went on there.
Yes.
Why you said it was.
Yes, I understood why you was asked to.
All right, he's not here now. This is the first time, this, this will be this one together. This is the first time that we think of. And my client said, he, he charged us, he came two days ago. And I said, well, he's here. If two days ago, he said he was coming, and he came today, I just pray that he didn't fall in or some mishap they have happened to him at great night. So, I have no answer. I work for that sake, I job, just the last adjournment. When he come again, in case we decided one way or another, whether I can stay or not, but I still want to see that continue till, till. And there's a reason why we still not seeing it. Because both name is resting on whether or not that was done, who did it, or not who did it. He was say on both, and so we hope that is telling the truth. But it's, that also has impression on this one. Like here, anybody, not that both especially, will not, will not compare it at all. So please allow us to have one more adjournment, which I consider final adjournment, so that we can. Ladies and gentlemen, rest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Raise your head, there. All right, this one, that's our job. Is that the one that is obvious? Hi. Thanks for wanting to, so we have done, like evidence I can give before the distinguished committee shall be the truth. All truth and nothing above the truth. Hi. Hello, my business, those who really are found, that the evidence I shall give for this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing above the truth.
I just quickly, just so that we, so that we have known that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing above the truth.
So please can you tell us our positions? We're going to talk about what's up here now. By, shall we add the director legal services? So this is very easy for us to, as long as it's not that we have to collect. Eh? Sure. We have to collect. This gentleman is stated, isn't it?
Yes.
So he's what?
Sure.
So, is, are you, that's just across of this town, and she must not, eh, do we have to now order it? Okay, so, okay, do you, do you owe him this?
Sir, I think, like we, what our submission to you states everything that, you know, where some police on suspicion, you stop payment, at the end of each month, monies are marked by the office of the, at the general officials. If they are receiving for a statement, it still be the same application to that office for them to pay. Uh, we have seen some monies, just like they in promotion areas, that we're getting for payments. Up to this moment, we are still expecting them, and I know that once that matter is attended to, even better, it's not, it's everything is there, we presented evidence.
So, so this is very straightforward, so if you didn't pay because the money had not returned back to you?
He said that they won't pay indirectly without passing laws.
So once, once they are taken really that budget office.
Yes.
Everything will resolve, I shall. Okay. I, did you listen to him?
Yes.
We know how civil service works, but the only thing we have. Budget office?
Yes.
We are going to write special. Eh? That our decision here, so we can instead of order that your areas should pay back. Eh, what, clearly that is pay to back your area, so that they can actually die as action. Eh, honestly, the tourist watch should drag in that, back of course, but they, they are not tonight, I love all these. But they are saying that because of that suspension period, payment was stopped, and so money must go back, and that's, and that's the one, it's go back again. And once you are listed, it's supposed to bring you back, but we're pressing, so we are going to write a letter, all right? To, to appeal and correct that she came back from here, all right? So this, the board is really not on that, and then we went through all this very thoroughly the other time, and, and, and. No way they want to be seen now, on that. All right, so, so you sent my letter? All right, we'll write the letter, and probably the letter will send related to the budget office, all right? On this matter, it's the same thing. Yes, why?
Part of the morning, yes, that, I'd be glad now, uh. I was given a promotion and was deferred, a promotion was deferred in twenty fifteen, and I expected that when I was listed, that promotion should be given to me. And up to now, my colleagues are two levels ahead of me. So, and when I went through all this, I was rat, I was a rat, and my family suffered too much for all the period of time, and I, I didn't ask for any compensation. So I expected that my promotion that was denied should be given to me, so that I and my colleagues should be up, I didn't really think to be different, the difference should not be much. And he, he denied me that promotion from my colleagues now, it's like denied me six years of my career.
All right, thank you. Okay. Counselor, is that unfair, is that unfair request?
Well, you know, based on the public service group, we just follow rules, and I believe the, the, the C N, the senior staff management committee met with the issue. And on the very top of the letter, you know invariably what the court ruled on the matter was that the police, for lack of diligent prosecution. They can wake up tomorrow to say that they are revisiting the matter, they are now ready to prosecute, but that is not our business. Our only is that to comply with public service group, but I haven't, I haven't received.
Counselor, was the matter, was, what was the decision of the matter?
The matter was, uh. For what, for what, for what, for what?
So was it dismissed?
No.
Was it not stronger? No, yeah. Was it, it's not saying that. What, what was this contest?
That was, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty two. Twenty nineteen to twenty thousand, forty two, nineteen.
So you say that because that was stronger for, for?
I said we don't have problem, we don't have problem with the matter.
Okay.
And the, it's just that the public service group guided the actions and the commission.
Yeah, but is there anything the public service group says that if, if it is stated fully, like that the, the benefit to him should be forfeited?
No benefits is denied.
So by his story, that is promotion, which was deferred, there's no kind of right there, but let me see, something deferred, I hear.
If, if there is going to be, uh, an order from this committee that it should be automatically placed along with the staff, then the commission can be looking at that. But if it's to be restricted, it's restricted, there are processes for promotion, the two examinations, and the last one that happened, I remember where he was giving a letter to attend the examination, which he didn't return himself. I don't know if I'm, if I'm saying this.
True.
And I know the matter when it came up to, from, from the, uh, senior staff committee, everybody was surprised why he didn't show up for the promotion. For somebody who didn't show costume attending the promotion, I don't know if the commission can do something different, because promotion is guided by setting, uh, rules.
So, were you aware, were you aware of every promotion exam?
No, sir.
Eh?
No, sir. That promotion I'm talking about was already fixed, the promotion was fixed, my name wasn't on the list. It was the day I came to pick up the letter of the statement, uh, I saw it inside the letter, but they will go, I, I went to the board, my name was not there for promotion. The people who.
So you didn't want to pick up your letter of the statement, was it, was it after the exam or before the exam?
It took before the exam. And people who were supposed to write the exam, but have been identified, they are actually, they have changed them for, for not to get, I didn't participate in the.
For that exam?
Yes. So I, I wrote, I wrote, I wrote the exam in the next.
I wrote it.
I was promoted. What I'm saying now, the one I was deferred, I was promoted, I was deferred.
On your, so you were promoted and deferred?
Yes.
Other, sir, you said there's, there's a promotion that is particular about, you wrote, the promotion was deferred because of this incident, right?
I think the, the public service group, once you are that willing, very actual, it will still actual on the board, but.
Guys?
Yes.
I want to, I want to.
If the matter has been resolved.
Which if it stays at the result?
Yeah, the matter will be revisited. I'm saying that he has not written any promotion examination, if he has, just like he has a due to that now, I would personally take the matter out, to say that if this guy has written an examination, the result should be, if he passed, it should get his promotion. But if he has not written, that is the good place where they might be.
Okay.
So I wrote, I, I wrote in the exam.
And you didn't pass it?
I passed, and I was promoted.
You were promoted?
Yes.
Okay.
So the one I'm talking about was on the one that was deferred.
Deferred, deferred, okay, let's get that, you see, is this the same exam, uh, made two, and you only got noticed the day before?
No, no, no.
This is another one?
This is another one.
Okay, when you say, when you were talking, when you said.
Excuse me.
When you said it was deferred.
Yes.
Does that mean that you are briefing exam?
I was, I was passed down, I passed down.
You wrote the exam, you passed?
Yes.
But the new promotion, the new data promotion is deferred.
Yeah, it's fair.
Can I say a couple of that?
At, at the next month? Where it will be worked?
At the next month? Sorry. Ending establishment of this, go, push it back a bit. Push it. Push it. The pusher. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm sure that. Three, I think three, go. Counselor, is there a specific? Counselor, turn off your mic.
Yeah, here, actually, most what I.
Actually, that's your letter?
Yes, it didn't talk about, uh, probably that letter might be indicating that it's not, it's not going to be considered promotion.
No, okay, do you want to read it, read for us? Read for us, okay. Do I have to say something?
He said, I am directed to inform you that the P M D, at the meeting held on the twenty seventh to twenty eighth January twenty fifteen, to consider staff promotion, resolve to defy your promotion, pending determination of the court case instituted against you by the C N cooperative.
Okay, so, okay, is, is that case not the one was, that you say struck out? And you say that's struck out?
Yes.
So that's resolved?
Yes.
His rights are restored, so if that's, if that matter, if that is, that process has resolved. What interpretation?
What, what, what are the scenario type of matters?
No, no scenario.
Okay.
As you mean. We are assuming from a letter, a letter, you want to assume something?
I just want to tell you our process.
Okay, tell me.
Before promotions are considered, names are put forward, just like what was abused, what is abused now. If there is any person, they provide, I think they are considering not to promote any person, letter like this will be delivered.
Yeah, but this letter.
I said to the person.
This letter is very specific.
Yes.
I didn't overturn the determination of your case in what?
Yes.
On one precedent? The case has been determined and struck out, obviously, or what for me to say?
I said.
So why?
I said if he has written the examination.
This letter, this letter said, look, I'm directed to inform you that, you know, what's the abuse?
How can I be said, be tested?
The theory, I, the theory of management.
Yeah.
Okay, at the meeting held on twenty seventh, twenty eighth, January, they will consider staff promotion.
Yes.
As we look for the meeting.
Yes.
Resolve.
The promotion is an exercise.
Resolve to determine, to, to design your promotion ending, determination of the court case is here, it is to be backed, so.
What are the experience?
I don't see any other interpretation.
The, the promotion, the promotion is, is an, is an exercise. Start with, distinct those that are qualified for promotion. If there is any reason for any of them not to participate in the examination, if there is any reason not to participate in the examination, they would like to in letter.
Okay, thank you.
I was also with team one, after I prepared for examination.
No, you wrote exam.
That is what I'm saying, if he has written an exam, there's no reason.
They said to promote.
Yes, there's no reason.
Is it possible, is it in what?
If he has written an exam.
He has, you keep saying if he has, he has.
I'm saying that I don't have evidence of that, the letter did state that he has written an exam, but he was qualified to be promoted. Among those to write exam, he is qualified, but he didn't state that he has written the examination, that is what I'm saying, he is qualified to write exam. To be promoted, if he has not written the exam. If he has not written the exam, he will not be promoted. That is what I mean.
I say, I say.
But if he, if he has written, just as we are saying here, if he has written the examination, there's no need for, nobody saying why it should not be promoted.
I, 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 I thank you very much. But it says deferred your promotion. You didn't say.
They are removing him, don't participate because.
Okay, that's one. Okay. I said.
That's you testing me.
Okay, okay.
I have, I have the exam.
Hey, okay, that's fine.
I have moved on.
Don't turn it off, don't turn it off. Turn it off, turn it off. So please.
Thank you very much. Um, I want to make a passionate remark here. We should reduce our grammar, long grammar. Long arguments over things that have settled themselves. I think that's why you don't do, you don't get proper judgments. I will keep complaining, maybe because I'm not a boy. Maybe that's why I don't like a mystery, a good rating, and I can't accept it myself. These thing, I, I'm, that, it is what they were considering at the board. Because at the past, as an exam, and they are going to promote people. And they are saying, I'm directed to inform you that the P M B expects at the meeting held so, so date, called, to consider staff promotion, to consider if your promotion pending determination of the case is paid against you. Very, very simple. Even no matter where you interpret, whether you wrote exam or not, what it meant is that he is qualified to be promoted. But they have to, whether this case be determined, upon his determination, to receive his promotion. Mister Chairman, just as they, uh, the order, they should go, resolve that, it's resolved, that they leave the call. Whether I have written exam or not, based on this letter, unless the person who wrote it didn't read it before I did it. But I believe that the person read, is properly read. Okay? He is read better than myself, no matter my offer of master's degrees in engineering. After lawyers and learned, engineers will not learn it. And if I had, if I had, you're a lawyer, you are learned, please do not interpret this negatively. That's why you are about going and avoid to start raising your points. Please, let's pass the order now. In this, no, 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 I'm sorry, you are not authorized, I don't want any other extra place. So, finally, sir, they should promote you, please, to get here from this.
Finally, sir, even your letter you wrote for his payment was non-committer. Letter dated fifteen to May twenty twenty three. Says, I write forth here with the restatement areas of Mr. Kiski, who has been on suspicion in addition, and letter is taken by the order of the court. And total salary and address to two of, eight for seventy million, for your necessary action. Can I leave final attention please? It's not committer. Can you be more fair? Can you now write them a reminder also, additional to this letter I'm reading? And please, specifically about your prayers, please. Just like the court, nobody will do what you not ask. Alright, um, thank you very much, thank, thank you for, for coming. I will, I will.
Sorry, you're losing.
Tell me about this.
Which will help the committee.
Okay, tell me.
I want the committee, I will urge the committee to write whatever they want commission to do. Formally, probably as part of the outcome of these engagements.
Okay.
They are now assess the commission's compliance on business of the access. So please, did they specifically what you want the commission to do?
Thank you. Alright, thank you very much. I will, uh, in case of, uh, in the case of a petition of case the one J against the Energy Commission of Nigeria, I will exhaustively look into the matter, committee has resolved, that Mr. One, the one thing, one J is, one, the one G, Kiski, one, um, letter of commission letter to Mr. One G dated thirty June twenty fifteen, deferring this promotion pending of the case is still against me by Energy Commission should to do as for the one. To effect the promotion of Mr. One J, One G Kiski as indicated in this letter dated thirty June twenty fifteen. Because the matter before the court have been adjudicated and dismissed or struck out. Two, that the Energy Commission should write another letter to the Budget Department. Request that his areas that was held as a result of intitiation should be fought with to Mr. Kiski One J. We shall follow this decision with a letter written to Energy Commission and pop into Budget Department. With further request that in next six weeks, Energy Commission should write back to the committee to apprise us of, of the compliance of this order. So this are ruling, this ruling of the committee. This case is further adjourned until we hear again from Energy Commission in six weeks.